Okay, if we're ready, I'll call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the whole. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
And Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay, we have minutes to approve from December 10th, 2018. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Eric. Any corrections? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Additions to the agenda? Any additions? Nope. Public input. I have one from Hyde O'Brien to speak on the 200 South Vine Street development. Yeah, just come on up here. Make sure the little green light on that microphone's on.
Yeah, it's on. So I just.
Pull the mic close to you so we can hear you.
I just reviewed some of the plans that were in the PowerPoint that was posted online. And as a local resident who constantly walks the sidewalks down Vine, I'm just imploring the council to require Green Street Realty to move the housing a little further off so that there is an easement that is not only commuter and pedestrian friendly, but also is safe for children, possibly include trees or green space so that the buildings don't affront to such a narrow easement, especially if Vine Street is going to remain a two-lane street. If that requires two units to be removed for such an option, I think that should be something the city council or the council of the whole require Green Street Realty to address. So that is really my only concern with the project. It looks like a much better improvement, and I applaud Green Street Realty for listening to the public input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Brien? Okay. Also, I have one public input card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, does not wish to speak, but it's on the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, saying we are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Any other, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay. Any staff presentations tonight? Other than what's on the agenda? Staff report? Any staff reports? Mayor?
Three announcements. The first is the community is invited to the community, countywide Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. annual celebration. It's this Friday, January 18th, starting at four o'clock at the Vineyard Church. The program starts at five. The community is invited. The keynote speaker is Father Michael Flager from St. Sabina in Chicago. That same day in the morning is coffee with the mayor at the Urbana Free Library from nine to 10 a.m. in the reading room in the front of the library. So the community again is welcome to come. Coffee will be provided, and you'll have an opportunity to meet with me and probably some staff members at the library. And then on tomorrow night, on Tuesday, January 15th, is the open house with information provided about the proposed development at the corner of University and Lincoln, the Gather Project by the Rail Development Corporation. That's at 6:30 p.m. at St. Pat's Hall at 708 West Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff reports? Okay, first up is ordinance number 2019-01-002, an ordinance vacating an alley, church alley south of Elm Street between Cedar and Race Streets. Brad Bennett from Public Works.
Yes, good evening. I apologize if I'm a little sniffling tonight, I'm coming off a head cold. But what we're proposing here is a vacation of a non-functional alley that actually runs through the existing library building. So this is kind of a cleaning up the paperwork thing. We want to, right now, there's currently a right-of-way shown through it. We want to vacate that so that that property goes into the two library parcels that are there now. So it's pretty straightforward. There's no costs, you know, in the transaction for the vacation of the right-of-way. With that, I'll open up if there's any questions.
Any questions for Brad?
I move sending this item to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Eric and seconded by Jared. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. And I guess, are you doing the next one?
Yeah, I'm doing the next one as well.
The next one is ordinance number 2019-01-003, an ordinance approving a bus shelter master license agreement with the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District.
Thank you. Per the Illinois Highway Code and per city ordinance, the city can enter into license agreements with other municipal units, the government, for the utilization of city right-of-way. Over the years, the Mass Transit District has located bus shelters both on private property and sometimes within the public right-of-way. Some, it depends upon how much public right-of-way is available, whether they can fit in that or not. But there's a growing preference towards locating the bus shelters in the public right-of-way. Unfortunately, we've never had an agreement with the Mass Transit District to do that. So we've been working with them, as well as the City of Champaign and the University of Illinois. Now all have agreements with the Mass Transit District to allow their bus shelters to, I guess, formally be within public right-of-way. There's obviously existing shelters out there that are within right-of-way. But, yeah, I just want to point out maybe a couple of key provisions that are included in kind of the codification of this master license agreement. You know, we would have the plans and specifications for any new shelters, as well as the location, be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Director. If a bus shelter is proposed for a location that does not have a public sidewalk adjacent to it, that's something that MTD would agree to put in as part of the bus shelter installation. I'll point out, that's only for new locations. That wouldn't cover existing. It has some maintenance standards as far as what the expectations from the city are for MTD to maintain the right-of-way and the shelter around it. You know, there's a procedure for relocation when directed by the city, you know, if there was some construction project or some need to relocate a shelter. And then there's the usual kind of boring legal stuff of identification and insurance and right determination. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, you know, we always write about the fiscal impacts. I'll point that out, too. The fiscal impacts on this are pretty minimal. Right now, we presently charge $80 for right-of-way permits as part of this agreement. We would be forfeiting that charge, you know, for the right-of-way permit. And we do typically charge private entities $0.85 per square foot of right-of-way occupation. That would be another thing that we'd be waiving as part. But I'll point out, in the past, we have not charged the Mass Transit District for right-of-way permits or ever had, I think, a charge per right-of-way occupation with them.
Okay, thank you.
So that'll open up the questions. I've got Carl here from the Mass Transit District to help answer these questions or anything you wanted to add before we open up questions.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions for Brad or Carl? Yeah, Mary Alice.
So seeing as we had our first major snow event, I noticed in Section 3.3 that there is a mention about snow removal, but there's no timeframe. I believe our current ordinance only mandates that if it is announced by Public Works that it's in downtown and the Philo area. Is there a rationale for not including a time or to include it in a similar manner that we have with the other businesses?
I think the only rationale is that we're more motivated to get it clear than you're motivated to have us get it cleared. So we're on it as quickly as we can. Our maintenance department gets out there and clears the shelters as it's snowing.
And right now, you only clear the shelters, right? You're not clearing the sidewalks?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion. I'll move ordinance number 2019-01-003, an ordinance approving a bus shelter master license agreement with the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District, be forwarded to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Jared and seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the Legal Division, too, for all their work and support of getting this agreement done.
Next is ordinance number 2019-01-004, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Eight, Omnibus Finance. Don Ho.
Good evening. Before you tonight is the Budget Amendment Number Eight for the fiscal year 2018, 2019. This is a fairly routine budget amendment, except for one item. The majority of the items on this list are either rebudgets or minor budget corrections. The most significant item on this list is related to workers' compensation claims. Because the city has successfully settled several workers' comp claims during the fiscal year, this amendment would increase the budget to pay for these claims by $450,000. The money would be drawn from the fund balance of the retained risk fund. That would bring the ending fund balance to a little below $1.6 million by the end of fiscal year. One thing to note here is that the city annual self-insure retention limit is from $500,000 to $600,000, depending on the situation. It simply means that the city is responsible for the first $500,000 or $600,000 for workers' comp claims before insurance kicks in. Because of this, finance staff will evaluate this during the budget process and possibly come up with a plan to replenish the fund balance next fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this item and other items. Elizabeth and Todd are also here to help as well.
Any questions? Jared?
So, Don, this $450,000, that's an expectation for what we may pay out this year or things we already know we're going to pay out? Todd and Elizabeth.
I'll jump in, and Todd can help. So periodically, Todd and I review together with our third-party administrator for workers' comp claims, the status of all the claims. And in a recent review, we looked at all the claims that may potentially settle before the end of the fiscal year because it appeared to me that the budget wasn't going to be sufficient. And so that's the estimated amount that they believe will settle before the end of the fiscal year. Some of them may go longer, but they're generally pretty aggressive about trying to settle.
Is this in addition to an amount we passed in the budget?
Yes, correct.
How much did we pass prior to this $450,000?
Two fifteen. Two fifteen. I think it was two fifty.
Or two fifty.
Yeah, so, yeah, the original budget correct was two fifty, so this would bring it to $700,000.
Okay, thanks.
So this is, just for the record, it's a number of smaller claims. It's not one large claim.
Okay.
Eric? So, do you have a sense, maybe this is an impossible question to answer accurately, but do you have a sense as to whether this is a trend or an accidental or a random bump this year?
Yeah, I think it's very predictable to determine how long these claims will take to process from beginning to end. There are a couple of variables. You have, you have to reach maximum medical improvement, or the individual who's injured has to reach that first. And so that can, based upon the factors of the injury, that can be anywhere from a month to a year to a year and a half. I mean, it can take quite a bit of time. But then, once you actually settle that portion of it, then the lawyers get involved. So first, it's the doctors, and then it's the lawyers who get involved. And then they work together to try and determine the appropriate amount of the claim based upon the statutory criteria. And so there's quite a bit of variability on the length of the claims, and it makes it very hard to predict from year to year. So last year, we spent, I think it was, what, $191,000 or something to around there?
I'm sure you're right.
Yeah. But before that, it was, I think the year before that, it was maybe a little over twice that amount. So it just ebbs and flows. And for instance, in this year, in the claims that we're looking at, a couple of them, one of them is about two and a half, over two and a half years old. The other is close to that. And so it's just, there can be quite a bit of lag time for some of these claims, and they can get solved in a clump, and then you can go a while and get somewhat of a stabilization or reduction in the overall amount. So it just depends on the year, so it's hard to predict.
I have one, for the $500,000 to $600,000 insurance coverage, is that per incident or per year?
It's per incident.
Per incident.
And it's $500,000 for non-public safety and then $600,000 for public safety.
And that's not an insurance limit, it's a self-insured retention limit, so that we pay everything up to $500,000 or $600,000 before the insurance takes over.
Okay. Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I have two questions that aren't related to workman's comp, so, Don. My first question is, it would be helpful, and I recognize that it might be challenging to have, at the end of the day, what is the general fund balance and the difference between what we had budgeted versus what we're now doing with these different omnibus? I think that that would be helpful. I realize that we're talking $1,000, but you look at $450,000 and your, you know, your eyes perk up. So that would be number one. My, number two is the landscape recycling. I realize that we are moving around things that perhaps weren't charged in the previous fiscal years. I'm curious if, does that mean that we have broken even, we're in deficit, or we've made money in the landscape recycling fund?
So this, so this is for, so we have, so for different departments at the city, we use the landscape recycling center. And the LRC center does charge back to the cities, and these are called interdepartmental charges. We didn't have these last year, so, and so that's why these transfer or charge didn't get charged to the account last year. So we're trying to put this into this year budget and to recognize those as interdepartmental charges.
So this is revenue, not expense? At the end of the day, I realize that it's going back and forth between funds.
This is revenue for the LRC.
Right, exactly.
Which charges for the department.
Okay, thank you.
But there is, for the record, as part of the budget process, we'll be taking a bigger-picture look at the LRC fund and whether it's sustainable financially over the long term.
Okay, thank you.
There's no more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to send this budget adjustment to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric and seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2019-01-005, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Green Street Realty Company of Illinois and authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 200 block of South Vine Street, 300 block of East Green Street, Community Development. Brandon. Oh, okay, and the mayor's going to start with a little presentation?
No.
Or a statement or something.
I just wanted to start off this conversation with a thank you to the many people who have gotten this project to this point. It's been actually years in the making, so I wanted to shout out to our economic development staff, Brandon Boyes, Libby Horowitz, Will Koltowski, plus our planning and engineering staff, finance, really, every department in the city has had a hand in getting this project to the point that it is. I'd also like to thank Green Street Realty, Chris Saunders and his team for working very closely with us, for taking, you know, for actually submitting a proposal and working closely with the city and responding to the comments and feedbacks from the community. And finally, a special thanks to the community members who attended the public, the meeting we held last fall, plus who have submitted comments, and city council members as well who have provided feedback on this proposal. I think the project has evolved in a way that reflects the community concerns and input, and we're pleased to be at this point. So I'll turn this over to Carol.
As the mayor said, this is an important sort of milestone decision point for this project, and Brandon and Libby are going to make a presentation that sort of walks us through some of the background, including the history of prior proposals for this site, the RFP, the LOI, the design feedback we got on October 23rd at our public meeting, and the response to that, and then the framework of the agreement that we have before us and the fiscal impact. And then I think Chris Saunders may have something that he wants to share as well. And so we're hoping to get through all of that and then handle questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to start with a quick overview of the site. The site is currently city-owned. It is located west of Vine Street, east of Urbana, north of Green Street, and south of Elm. Currently on the property is a vacant former Goodyear Tire Building, a city parking lot, and vacant land. The city first issued an RFP for the site in 2011. The resulting proposal was a seven-story mixed-use building called the Metro Center. Ultimately, the project did not go through as it was financially unfeasible. In 2015, the city partnered with brokerage firm CBRE to issue the second RFP for the site. The city selected TWG out of Indianapolis to develop the property into a high-density apartment building. During this time, the property was rezoned to B4, and TWG held a neighborhood design meeting in which the neighborhood gave input to the design that they wanted at the site. The project, once again, did not go through because it was not financially feasible. In 2018, the city issued a third RFP for the site. This time, the city changed the request slightly to include medium-to-high-density townhome and residential development in the request. There were seven potential developers that the city talked with, over 50 times between those seven developers. Two developers submitted proposals, and the city selected Green Street Realty. They selected Green Street Realty due to the project layout, the project timeline, as well as the financial feasibility with the project. The city entered into a letter of intent with Green Street Realty in September of Included in that letter of intent was a preliminary design. The letter of intent also had the developer agree to seek public comment, as well as revise the preliminary design. And that resulted in a final design, which is attached in the redevelopment agreement. Shown here is the initial design as attached in the original letter of intent. After public feedback, this is the changed final design that is included in the agreement. Please note that this is the final design, but it still has to go through the city's development review process to ensure that the final project plans meet city code. So after public feedback, there were elements that were kept from the original design. This included the layout of the exterior buildings with the interior parking. Also, the floor plans and the square footage was largely kept the same. There were major design changes as well. The public indicated that they wanted a more urban design that better incorporated the materials that are found in downtown Urbana. Brick was added to the first two stories of the building and ifus on the third story of the building. There was an increased setback and planters along Vine Street. Also, the roofline was changed from more of a sloped roofline to a flat roofline, and larger windows were included. The height of the building was also changed, where previously it was more of a varied two and three throughout. The two-story buildings were placed closer to Urbana, with the three-story buildings on Vine Street, and that's to account for the residential as well as the downtown feel. Green space was added to the center with a dog park and covered bike parking. And after the public indicated they wanted sustainability features, solar panels were added to the covered parking for use in the common area. So to summarize, the final design includes a minimum of 23-story units and 22-story units, a minimum of 25 surface parking lots, spaces, enclosed garage parking spaces on the ground floor of a minimum of 15 units, building exteriors comprised of brick, woodboard, and exterior insulation finishing systems, sufficient setbacks along adjacent streets to ensure pedestrian and resident safety, at least 20% of the units having the ability to be adapted for upper-story ADA accessibility as required by code, and covered bicycle parking with an active solar array. The updated final design is included in the agreement, and the project must be substantially in accordance with the project design exhibited in the agreement. However, the remainder of the design details are to be worked out in the design review process, and the project must be fully in accordance with city code.
Thanks, Libby. So I'm going to go over some of the other provisions in the agreement. Most of this was already outlined in the letter of intent, very little changed throughout the process. So the agreement would obligate the developer to participate with 20% equity, and the project needs to be performed at a minimum cost of $5 million. The start date was pushed back a little from the original letter of intent to start by April of 2019 with the intent to have the project fully completed by 2020, although I think Green Street stated goals to try to get, to achieve leasing in August of 2020. The agreement also would require committing to aspirational goals for the hiring of minority and women-owned contractors. The city will achieve this through working with a consultant, which will be a cost of about $10,000. We've already had a preliminary meeting with the consultant and Green Street's team to start some initial introductions to possible contractors to work with. The final agreement will require the developer to serve as a management agent for the project for a period of five years. And as has been stated before, it's the developer's responsibility, through this agreement, to pay for site preparation costs of all those noted, including demolition of the building that's there currently. The agreement provides for incentives. The sale of the property, which is valued about $1 million, would be sold at $1, but the developer is providing a personal guarantee that the project will be completed as is described in the agreement. After project completion, the project would become eligible for rebates of incremental property taxes, so 100% of new taxes being rebated in the first year, and then it stair steps down. That's identical stair step to the Think Urbana program that townhomes are otherwise eligible for. In the enterprise zone, it's an abatement, not a rebate, but that's the tool we have here is TIF, so it's being offered as a rebate. But it's not, you know, a greater incentive than other developers can achieve elsewhere in Urbana. The project is also expected to qualify for sales tax exemption certificates because it is a townhome project, and our enterprise zone will allow for that. The fiscal impact starts with the fact that the property is currently has no assessed value, it's not generating any property taxes. So, once that property is sold to a private owner, it, and then, of course, when the value is increased from the project, it'll start generating incremental property taxes for the central TIF district. So that means all new taxes will accrue to the TIF fund. That'll be about, so initially, over those first five years, we'll rebate back about $450,000 of the total $3.4 million we anticipate prior to the end of the life of TIF, the central TIF, in 2040. So by 2030, we expect that the central TIF fund will have recouped an equivalent amount of revenue to the approximate value of the property itself. So that's, from a value perspective, the break-even point. And then by the end of the life of the TIF, there'll be a net $3 million in the TIF fund of new revenue. And I guess that concludes my overview, but importantly, it is the, this would be the first new residential project for downtown Urbana in the past 13 years. So in addition to, you know, generating roughly $3 million in revenue for the TIF district, we are selling a property, but the city's also gaining a lot of input, and we've provided that opportunity for residents to have that input to control the outcome of the development for this site in a manner that we think is consistent with the city's goals, but also the public's interest. And I think we're going to turn things over to Chris Saunders. And I think we're gonna turn things over to Chris Saunders now of Green Street Realty.
Hi, Chris Saunders, Green Street Realty. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the time. I do want to reiterate what Diane said. It's been a very good experience for me as well as on the development side dealing with the city staff, especially Brandon and Libby, and Diane and her team have been great. We've really spent a lot of time on this, really pre, pre even submitting anything, just getting ideas from the very first meeting and being able to get feedback, take feedback, and really think of all the things that people brought us. We had a lot of feedback, a lot of positive feedback on people excited about a development happening in downtown Urbana, even though some people didn't love the original look of the design we did originally. There was a lot of positive feedback on this was the type of project that we thought that would be successful. So that was good. We did our best to kind of take a lot of that, a lot of the feedback. Luckily, a lot of the feedback was very similar on, you know, I guess we were a little surprised. We thought it would be the opposite, that people were thinking residential. We want a residential feel here. And really, a lot of the feedback we got is that we want it to kind of really fit into downtown Urbana and be more of an urban feel and less of maybe a single-family type look. So we did, just to kind of go through this packet, and I will mention a couple of things. A lot of times renderings are renderings, they don't give you really a feel of what this might look like. My point being, I believe that it's gonna look a lot, a lot better with real materials than just on a picture right now. So, you know, we tried to take a lot of the, if you can kind of see the main kind of courtyard there in our main picture. We are limited a little bit on this design to the site and the size of the site, how much green space we can have in the middle of it while still achieving parking. So we did try to expand that from our original plan and put some, an area where people can actually enjoy the area and maybe get out of their apartment and be able to have some green space. And if you have a pet, be able to kind of walk your dog and kind of get some of our essential inside services, our trash area, just kind of a nice little common courtyard area. If you go down to kind of the main view, this would be along Vine Street. A lot of the feedback we received was to push the product, the property forward more towards the street, similar like you'd see in downtown Urbana. And that's kind of where we came up with this idea, pushing it forward. We also came up with the idea at one point of adding planter boxes, and I can't remember where that came from. But those type of things are all things that can, you know, change if the planter boxes aren't the way to go, and we want other kind of landscaping there. We like the idea along Vine Street being more up towards the street like you'd have as you go down downtown, in downtown Urbana. Along the other three streets, we've got a setback with some grass and trees that would go along those areas, and you can probably see that more. This is a view kind of along Vine Street again with the planter box idea. This would be the back, the backside, one of the feedback items we received in, from several different people, where they thought maybe step this down from a three-story back to a two-story along the residential neighborhoods in the back, and we went ahead and did that. Actually, we liked the way it looks, doing the two stories in the back. Just give a lot more of a neighborhood feel in the backside of the property and fit in, you know, pretty well with everything that continues back. As you go all the way back, all the way to Cottage Grove and that neighborhood, there's a lot of two-story type properties. So it seemed to fit in well with those, so that's kind of where we came up with the backside. Along that backside, we do have a setback, more grass along the area between the property and the sidewalk. This would be kind of a straight-on view again on Vine Street. We made the windows bigger, added more brick. This would be a corner view, kind of giving you that feel of looking at it where you're able to see the step-down in height from the three-story to the two-story properties on the side there. Again, another back view. This would be a view kind of facing the side street. We've got two entrances, main entrances on this for traffic, and those are both on the Urbana, not Urbana, the Green Street and would be Elm Street side. We just thought that would be a lot better than trying to come out onto the main thoroughfare of Vine Street. We think this is gonna, you know, be an easy way for people to access the property still and not cause, you know, big traffic congestion in the area. This is a back view. We're still, you know, working on, the idea was to vary the materials in the back. I don't think this does a great job of showing how it will look in the end, but the idea was not have it be one long plane of the same color of materials, just to break it up even in the inside of the project. So if you're in inside looking, it still has some character. Again, this is the idea of the courtyard view. We do have brought some solar panels into this and some, you know, using some of that energy on this area along with some grass and just kind of common area space. Again, you can kind of get an idea of the pass-throughs between the building and the garages. These will have, these will be unique properties just because of the size of the units. The trend in development right now, especially really everything student and regular multifamily development is small units. And these are much, much larger than we typically have built by several hundred square feet. So these are definitely more of a residential-type unit. I mean, our three bedrooms are nearly 1,700 square feet with garages, and that's gonna be, I think, a super attractive feature for a family or, you know, professional type, or a graduate student. We like that size. It just differentiates it in the market. Gonna make them, I believe, very, you know, a very exciting option for people that haven't had that in the past. Again, a backyard kind of view, and then our overview of the project. Just, this gives you a breakdown of the type of units. Really, it's almost all threes in the front. It is all threes in the front and twos in the back. We've got about a 50/50 mix of threes and twos in the project. Then our floor plans. Like I said, our floor plans really did not change significantly at all when we changed the design of these from the townhouse look with the pitched roofs. The floor plans stayed really the same along the way. So we got a two-story with no balcony. We've got a three-story with a garage and a balcony, a two-story with a balcony, so both models have balconies. And the three stories, a lot of those have garages. So that is, you know, kind of the layout, several different floor plans. I'm here for any questions. I know I met with several council members one-on-one on this project, and would love any feedback now that we've shared it with everybody, just what feedback we might have. And again, mention that we're very excited about the project. And being an Urbana resident myself, I see a lot of positive things going on right now in Urbana. And hopefully, this will kickstart a movement for more happening in downtown and given more foot traffic in this immediate area.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Dean?
I have a question for city staff, I guess. Regarding the $10,000 for the consultant fee, it's not my intent here to start a debate on affirmative action or all the subjects that that includes that we've heard about for so long here on council. But my question is more of, you know, we have an economic development department. We have a human resources department and human relations staff. Do we need to spend $10,000 to hire an outside consultant to monitor your guys' hiring, or Green Street Realty's hiring practices? Can't we do that ourselves?
Can I just address that? So this is in line with the discussion that we've had a couple of times about the mayor council priorities, and that it takes resources to advance those priorities. The gentleman that we've been working with specializes in counseling developers with, about how to, you know, how to do this type of hiring, how to introduce them to the companies that we want to promote, and has relationships with these companies. And so each project that we use this consultant for has sort of a customized approach. And given that the goals are, at this point, are aspirational, it really does need some dedicated resources. So it's not a monitoring thing. It's really an educational process. It's an investment of time on both parties' side, and we need outside help to do that, and it's specialized help. But as we talked about with the, in the priority discussion, it doesn't happen for free.
Okay. Dennis?
So can I ask then, is our staff not qualified to offer that services? And you're talking about a consultant, but you're talking about a consultant that what is centered in champagne and banner? Or are they from outside?
I'm gonna let Brandon tell you about this individual's qualifications, but...
What about our own staff's qualifications?
I was gonna, I want you to understand this individual's qualifications. They don't have the specialized, our staff does not have the specialized expertise of this individual, but we also don't have the bandwidth to do this in a robust fashion in order to get results. So we would need the help, even if we had the specialized help on staff. At the moment, we don't have the bandwidth for it. So Brandon, can you tell about Mr. Coleman's expertise?
Yes, we worked with Dr. Fred Coleman on the Cohen Building Agreement to date, which is a renovation of an existing building. So the way this generally works is we go in, we work with the developer to set expectations of what the project cost is gonna be. And then Dr. Coleman uses his expertise to assess what the developer's doing, what trades are gonna be involved, discusses how bids are put out there, and discusses strategies with the developer for maximizing minority and women-owned participation in those bids. And that sometimes rolls up into changing how construction management may have occurred in the past. We don't have construction management expertise in-house for private housing projects or for historic renovations. Really, unless it was a streets project, I'm not sure that we are gonna find the in-depth knowledge we'd need to really make sure that this interaction that a private developer is having with city staff is worthwhile. Our goal has always been, because we can't, these are aspirational goals. We can't necessarily enforce these from a purely numerical standpoint. Our goal is to have effective communication, education, and see a change in meaningful behavior and best practices in the developers we work with. And we hope that Green Street Realty learns something in the process so they can bring these practices to future projects in addition to staff being able to tell council from an informed perspective that the aspirational goals that were set for the project were consistent with the availability of contractors in the market and the requirements for the project itself.
Jared?
Oh, I just wanted to ask, has this been done before, this outside consulting thing? Because this is the first I've heard of it.
For the Cohen Building Redevelopment Agreement?
No, I mean, has it been used before for any private projects like this? Or any married projects with the city?
Not prior to those recent, this agreement which is proposed and the Cohen Building Redevelopment Agreement at Race and Main Downtown.
So I guess I'm wondering why are we starting this now? And Green Street Realty has built a lot of things, so he's not an unknown. I mean, we know his background. Where'd this come from? It just kind of seemed out of the blue to me, but...
This was a, this was a priority for the city, was my understanding.
I agree.
Per this body, that was actually put, this language was introduced in the request for proposals when we started this whole process. So it's been in the letter of intent, and now it's here in the development agreement.
I mean, if you're asking why is this the first project that Green Street Realty is being approached in order to do this, we have to have, the city has to have some stake in the relationship in order to introduce this, unless somebody wants to do it proactively. The idea here is, you know, if we are able to introduce Chris Saunders to some people who are, you know, minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses, and they develop a relationship, that that relationship would actually go beyond just this project.
Okay, Jared?
Brandon, I don't know if I caught something in there. Were you saying that at the end of the project, perhaps we'll see some kind of report about the effectiveness of us achieving the goals? Is that what you were alluding to?
Yes, I mean, the developer has to, per the agreement, has to report those aspirational goals. And in order for staff to evaluate those, that those are appropriate aspirational goals. That's where the expertise of the consultant and the legwork takes place. So, yes, we would evaluate how the developer performs on those aspirational goals. And also, again, looking at the best practice or good faith efforts of the developer in pursuit of that goal. There's a story to tell after the fact about the experience, what was learned from it, as well as how do we do on the goal itself.
Okay. I, it's just, you know, it's always good to see if we're being effective with our uses of resources. So seeing it at the, at the end result, I think we'll probably all still be on council at that time, the completion of the project. It'd be interesting to have a look and say, okay, well, this is what we did. We hired, what was the gentleman's name?
Dr. Fred Coleman is whom we worked with for the Cohen Building Project. And we tend to approach him for this, but we're under no obligation to do so at this point and haven't reached an agreement with Dr. Coleman either, so...
Okay. But anyway, if we do hire Dr. Coleman, then we can look back and say, okay, well, here's what he did. Here's what he said. Here's what actually happened, and the conditions and circumstances in which it happened. Will we be likely to see something similar to this in the future? For other, if the city's involved in other projects where the, I guess it's involved with sale of city property and stuff like that?
I mean, that depends on the continued guidance of the council and mayor. At this time, staff intends to continue to include this provision in the agreements and continue to develop our capabilities and our ability to assess and carry out these kinds of obligations.
Awesome. Well, I hope it is fortuitous.
Other questions? Eric?
So I apologize if I missed this, but are there results available for the Cohen Building Project with respect to these particular goals?
They have announced that they have signed a lease for a tenant, a Japanese restaurant, but they have not conducted a full phase of the project yet. There have been no reimbursements, although there has been a lot of effort on the front end of working with the developer, introduction to contractors, assessing the work. But we would wait to provide a report until after at least one of the phases is completed.
If I could pursue one other item. All those flat roofs are gonna have a lot of sun shine on them. And it would be a terrible waste if we didn't at least make these, this project solar-ready during the construction because retrofitting would be much more expensive. So, how about that?
Well, I had a feeling you might mention that, so, which is great. We, yeah, we did meet with several different solar experts, learning, you know, and it obviously is a trend right now of growing. It's becoming more and more affordable. It still was not feasible at this time to actually put the solar panels everywhere, but we did, we do think we can put the conduits in and make it solar-ready. So that parts in in the future. If prices continue to go down, it might be the next flat-screen TV for all we know here in a few years. And, yeah, we're gonna try to make this, we're gonna try to put the conduits in place to make that job easier in the future should we convert or add solar energy to this. So we, as of this morning, we weren't sure that we've made some, we've had some conversations, and I believe we can do that, so would have that ability.
That'll be great, and I think your reasoning from a business point of view is probably right because you've got a bottom line to meet, and you've got to, you've got to meet market value for these things. And the trend lines for the solar panels, they're getting a lot, they will be, almost certainly, a lot cheaper in, let's say, five years than they are now, so...
Yeah, we totally, we like, we like the idea, the concept behind it. I think on this project, along with all the projects that we do, or any developer struggles with, is there's ultimately a value to it. There's a rent level that even if we think we can get more, or whatever it might be, there's an ultimate value, and for us to go out and get a loan on the project and build it, we're gonna be kind of limited to where that ultimate value is. So we always look at those things when... So we always look at those things when we go down a road of promising, you know, certain finishes and things like that. We're, we're no different than anybody. I want the best finishes we can possibly put on these projects. And we're always limited by, unfortunately, the, you know, the cost. And, and cost in construction is certainly not going down any, but I think your request to make them at least ready for future use, and I do agree with you. I think that future could be a lot sooner than we think. And it, it would be a good marketing, we, we believe having it there is a good, is good for the project. It's just right now, when we looked at what it would cost per unit to put it in and what it would actually achieve from a, you know, use, how much of it would actually benefit on a meter from, for a tenant, it's, it's not as big as we thought it might be either. You know, you're not getting 90 percent, you're not getting rid of your electric bill. But you're, you're saving a lot of money over, over a long period of time. Just a lot of capital on the front end to put it in.
I'm glad that they'll at least be ready.
Yeah, they'll be ready to roll, yeah.
Therese.
I'm the new kid on the block.
Welcome.
So I do have one question, just looking at your design. I didn't see any space for children.
In the apartments, there's a lot of space, you know, there's their two- and three-bedroom apartments. We're limited a little bit on this site. And this has got, one of the challenges of this sites is, is the power pole that runs through this lot and right through the building. With our discussions with Amrin, it's literally almost impossible to just pick that up and move it and do something with it because it literally runs all of downtown Urbana, including the Schnucks and everything else. And burying it was somewhere in the, to take it down and try to bury that is somewhere in the mid to upper six-figure type, you know, maybe $750,000, if it could be done. And I, it's, so we've gotta kinda design around that a little bit. And we also designing around the idea that this project's on a courtyard. And we've gotta fit in an adequate amount of parking because we do expect young families and having parking there. And green space is gonna be.
I just noticed, you know, you had dog play, but not baby play.
Yeah, we, the, the dog play thing's up in the air a little bit, you know, but that's the idea. We're trying to fit something in there. We, you know, it may be, maybe it's playground equipment or it's a, those things can certainly be negotiated. We'd love to see people walk down to Victory Park down the street too and enjoy those. You know, it's a very easy walk from here to get to that park, which we hope is another amenity for this particular project. But yeah, we're a little limited there, but I agree with you. It'd be nice to have more, more things there. We're, we're looking at that, we certainly can consider that in the final kinda design of that courtyard area.
Mary Als.
All right, so I have 10 questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I've listed them down here. I will go as quickly as possible. I'll start with the easy ones. So setback on Vine, you heard today that there was a question about sidewalk space. So what is the proposed setback?
Um, you know, I don't believe there is one that's required.
There is not. B4 doesn't require anything.
Yeah, um, we don't want it right on top of the sidewalk where a door opens up and you're right there. I mean, but the doors will all swing inside too by code, I believe. So it's not like doors are gonna be flying out to the, to the sidewalk. But we are also challenged, like I mentioned, we're making this basically a U. And we've already got a pretty established set of power lines running down here, which we can work around pretty easily. We've set it up that way. The more we step back off Vine and go that way, we're shrinking that ability. We're, we're gonna lose some, some units there. So we wanna be up towards Vine, but if that's a flower box away or a little bit of grass away, we're open to that. We're gonna try to keep it up near there. But a lot of the feedback we received last time was we want it like downtown. We wanna be on the sidewalk, and that's kinda where that came from.
Let me rephrase, I apologize. So Urbana Street, what is the proposed setback on Urbana?
I believe we're doing like 10, like a typical setback.
15 is typical for our five?
We show that green space. If you go up to the, you kinda see there where the sidewalk's at and where the building's at. So on three of the four sides, we, we do show a pretty decent, you know, amount of space with still maximizing the site to get enough units in there that we need to make the project work. But we do plan on having grass and trees and things.
Sidewalk, grass? Okay, all right. Then, let's see here, what else is easy here? Brandon, how did, can you explain how the rebates work?
The rebates, the, after the project is completed and assessed, then the developer pays their taxes like normal. Because it's in a TIF district and because the base value was zero, all the new taxes come to the TIF district. So in the first year, we will rebate 100% of those taxes back to the developer. And then the second year, 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%.
Okay, so I guess my confusion with that is this, so the city only gets what, 14 or 16% of the property tax, but we're gonna rebate 100% of it. Does that mean that the school district gets there over 50%?
In the TIF fund, none of the taxing bodies per se receive.
Right.
Any of the taxes. It's, it's received by the, the, the TIF district and the city manages that fund as a fiduciary for all the taxing bodies. The council makes those decisions ultimately on behalf of all the taxing bodies. So that additional $3 million in revenue that would be coming in over the remainder of the life of the TIF district, ultimately, the city has the option of reinvesting that money into the TIF district, either in public infrastructure, other incentives, other programs. But it becomes, you know, a part of the TIF fund and a part of the TIF program.
Okay, so basically, if they were paying 100% of the property tax, it still would go into the TIF and the other taxing bodies wouldn't receive their percentage?
Not immediately.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the 10K that we've been talking about in terms of the consultant, is that gonna be paid out of the TIF funds?
Yes, it's an eligible expense.
Okay, and then is that a flat rate or is it an hourly rate?
That is an estimate, and as I mentioned, there is no agreement at this time.
Is it typically an hourly rate or is it typically a flat rate?
Typically an hourly rate.
Okay. I'm curious, Mr. Sanders, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
For coming and also for committing to do this project. Right now, I know that you guys do a lot of building in this community, so you probably have standard crews that you use?
Well, we've got so much work, the neighborhood of about $200 million worth of construction we're starting over the next two years. We use every, we do use a lot of, a lot of different subs because a lot of the subs can't do, we can't use the same sub over and over again on, on jobs. So we do use a variety of different subcontractors.
So what percentage would you anticipate using existing people that you've used in the past?
I mean, I think we'll continue, we've got good relationships with a lot of, I would say, a, a good percentage, but we're also looking for new, you know, new subcontractors to use. We don't use very many subcontractors that are out of the area, meaning central Illinois. We do use contractors that are in Bloomington, Normal, and Peoria. We try to stay, a lot of our subs are local in this central Illinois area and locally in Champaign-Urbana.
All right, and then I can stop and pause and let other people ask questions, or I can continue.
Dennis.
So thank you very much also for, Chris, for really addressing a lot of the issues that came up. You know, I had quite a few myself personally with you, and you were very receptive to them. And I see that the design has changed quite a bit and answers a lot of them. We had a possibility for a thorough public review of the plan of the first design that you did. But to date, we haven't had an opportunity to have a public hearing and a feedback session for this new design. And because it's quite different, I think it's important to have a chance for the public to be introduced to it in a formal way and to respond to it more than just having it occur a few minutes before a final vote is done by the city council, which it seems to be maybe is how we're kind of, kinda working it out so far. So I'm wondering if you would be willing to have a public presentation and delay the vote of the city council by two weeks?
To answer your question there, I mean, I think tonight's open for anybody to be here. I don't know if there's gonna be any other comments afterwards. We're already, we've already pushed this project quite a bit. The goal initially would, was to be over on the site right now, actually demoing and, and working and when we had weather, we're really under it, I think it was mentioned earlier in one of your other presentations about, we're in a college town and a lot of the leases and timeframes are kinda on this August schedule. We, we delivered Carl at the Fields Building One recently in October. And, you know, we had everybody wanting to rent it if we were done in August. And we, we fear pushing this back, there's a lot of other factors involved. There's economic pressures right now, delaying anything on the project, rising rates, things along those lines that might change our, our feeling of being able to do this or other projects. So the, the timing of it really is important for us to get this done. We have not engaged our architect at all right now. They've done nothing. They've done the pretty renderings, they've done unit layouts, but there is six to eight to 10 weeks of full drawings, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. You know, engineers that need to look at this stuff, structural people, and get the plans done, turn them over to John and his team, and they've got another few weeks to review those and finally get us to the point where we can actually start construction. So right now, we have that at April 1 to kinda meet one of our goals, which would be to try to get some, maybe a portion of this opened in the fall of '19. The longer we push that, we're then fighting up against winter conditions and weather and everything else. And then we maybe push it even another, you know, we might look at doing spring a 20 start, which then throws off our timelines. And I, I'm concerned, developer who's, who's looking, loves to build in Champaign-Urbana, and I'm, I'm, I'm all for it, but we're looking at other markets as well. And we're looking at competition and the number of new projects that are coming to this market and other markets. And obviously, I've got concerns that something else just happens to pop up. It might change our economics and, and whether we want to do it. So I kinda wanna be the first one in and going. And we're ready to go on this project. We're ready to engage architects, sign the contract and go. And we didn't really, we did receive a good amount of feedback at the first meeting. I was a little shocked to see that a lot of the people did not show up tonight. I know it was pretty well publicly announced again. And yeah, I really would not like to do that. I'm not saying I, you know, if you guys vote, that's what you wanna do. But it really would put a, a dent in what we're trying to do timeline-wise.
Okay, well, thank you for a very frank answer. I wanna ask a couple other questions. It wasn't really, really easy to tell from the schematics whether the courtyard would have two stories of brick on the interior courtyard, or was that some other material?
We're looking at EFS, actually, the inside of that is likely the kind of hardy board-type material. It's gonna be, it's a wood, I think I showed you in our office. It's, it's a very expensive product, actually. We just bid in another site and it was, was not cheap. Yeah, we plan on using that, that, that product in the inside of there, it's, it's a wood.
Yeah, so there's not really brick facing on the interior courtyard?
We have brick right now planned for the inside of the project, that's correct.
Okay. I did get quite a few questions from one of my constituents who has very thoughtful comments. She was also concerned about the setback. I, I've already stated here in council that it'd be really great to be able to have some trees along Vine Street because it's, would create kind of a boulevard effect. And I think that's a handsome way of having an urban development. So I don't know if it's possible to maybe stagger some, maybe like six or seven of the units back a couple feet for allowing that? Or if you've planned for having planters, is it possible to put trees in the planters up against the building? Or would they need to be moved to the curb?
Yeah, to answer that, I'd say our setbacks on three of the four sides are typical setbacks, 10, 15 feet that you'd see in most developments. The front's gonna be difficult, I think. A lot of the feedback and the reason it's like that is just because that was the main feedback we got before is we want it up against the sidewalk. I worry about trees and then, you know, getting in the sidewalk, way of the sidewalk, if they're gonna grow and what we'd put there to keep them from being a nuisance to people walking down Vine Street and the sidewalk, but.
And so then, Brandon, what is the passable width of the sidewalk then? With, if there were gonna be planters against the building, which would obviously not be a place to walk then?
I don't think that changes the sidewalk. We just had planters between the building and where the sidewalk, it'd be a typical sidewalk like there is now.
So what's the width of the sidewalk?
I'm, I'm not sure the exact width, but council should know the city has very little right-of-way to be working with on either side of, of Vine Street. The, the right-of-way stops where the sidewalk stops currently. It's not a particularly wide sidewalk. So the details of this would be worked out in the development review process internally involving community development and public works staff. And so ideas about, well, and also after the developer has had the opportunity to have the architect and the engineers really have detailed drawings. At that point, they can make determinations at that time and negotiate about how to best handle the right-of-way for safety purposes and also for any beautification that's possible. But it, it's very hard to make any determination about this based on a conceptual drawing.
We have not engaged a civil engineer as of yet. That would be one of these items that we engage after, you know, we get approval, we would go forward with all those, those departments. And that would be one of the, laying the project out would be step one to the scale of the lot, based on a survey.
So I would like to, to say that if it's possible to put trees along the boulevard of Vine Street, it'd be beautiful. I do appreciate the fact that there's possibility and it's been indicated on the drawings that there's gonna be trees along the other sides.
Yep, absolutely.
My, my constituent also asked about pedestrian safety at the crosswalk there, but that's really a city problem and has to do with more of the street than you, that you can't control that. I wanted to ask about converting the dwellings to for accessibility. Right now, there aren't any ADA compliant accessible two-story or three-story units, is that correct? You don't really expect that?
Well, you wouldn't build them that way, they all have to be adaptable. I believe it's 20% of a project like this has to be adapt, handicap adaptable. So they'll be adaptable, that'll be a code review item that we could, whether we're Green Street or TWG or anybody else, those are items that are required by the building code. So we, we have to offer accessible units that are adaptable. They don't, you don't build them that way to start with, but they're adaptable for somebody that would like to lease some. And I believe the number on the project like this, this type of construction is 20%, but.
So that's a generous number, but if you were gonna be adapting it and if you were in a wheelchair, who would then pay for the elevator to take you to the second story?
Uh, there's a whole lot of codes issues on that, adaptability code, you'd have to read it, I believe. It changes based on when it's built and when the tenant comes in. I don't have that all memorized because it's different for each project. But yeah, that's, that's usually a cost on the front end that if somebody came to us, we've done this on campus many times where they are gonna rent a building from us and we need to make some adaptable changes to them for their, for their needs. That's something that we would do on the front end of this. But there's, I, I can't quote Illinois Accessibility Code to you, it's pretty, pretty lengthy, but.
So you'd actually?
Yeah, we're bound to whatever those rules are.
Okay, so that if, if maybe one or two tenants in the first rental or leasing program were interested in, in moving in and they had accessibility problems, you would retrofit the, or you would, you would prepare one or two units for them?
We would do whatever code requires us to do, yeah, without.
It wouldn't necessarily be the, the burden of the individual who wants to move in?
Again, I'd have to read the code, I'm not an accessibility expert. But we, we were, we are bound to whatever everybody else is on the Illinois Accessibility.
Okay, okay. So Brandon, would you know how to answer that question?
No, I would refer, defer to our building safety staff in particular and also note that it, I think we need plans for them to make a full determination. But John Schneider's here and could maybe offer a few words.
And I guess I'm wondering, is that, if there's some space, maybe it's a closet or a corner that you, you've sort of seen that it could be used?
Yeah, they've accounted for that in these drawings. They know, the architects know where those are at because we had that laid out, I think, the first time around. There is a way to do that, we, it's been thought of. Right now, this is just a schematic rendering. But they'll be in the plans, we have to show anything that's adaptable. That's typical in all the new construction, whether it's a seven-story building or a two-story building. You've got, those are items that have to be shown, whether they're balconies that show platforms that go in them. There's a lot of things that, that have adaptability and it's, John might be able to tell you exactly what it is.
Okay, so I don't know, maybe you can enlighten me on that?
Well, I don't know that I can enlighten you completely. It's, it changes depending on what the need is, that's a very important part, component of it. Because not every person who is dealing with a disability or needs adaptability is in a wheelchair. You know, there might be other issues that they have to deal with. And typically, our code staff works with the property owner. In this case, because of the property, our, our ordinance, our adopting ordinance provides because the property is being provided as part of the development project by the city, then the project has to be visitable, and that's a little bit different. And that, those requirements are called out in the code, zero-step entries, you know, a little bit wider doors and things like that. But during the, like Chris said, during. during the develop, you know, review of the plans, we would, we would determine whether that meets that criteria or not.
It's kind of a hard question, too, because there's many, many building types, and it changes really based on the building type, and there's a lot of different types. And I don't want to say one thing and be wrong on it, because I don't know, but we certainly will go through that whole process. It's not something we can change, really. It's out of our control on what's going to be required.
Okay, so thank you then.
Yeah, no problem.
Any others? Any other questions before we go back to Mary Ellis? Okay, Mary Ellis?
All right. So some of this stuff is legal. So I'm curious, this agreement is with Green Street Realty. Does that mean that for five years, is that the term, that they have to manage the property? Is that correct? I'm looking at you, Jim. I can, I can find the page, because I highlighted it. If you want me to find the page, page eight?
I don't have the agreement memorized.
What?
That is, that sounds correct. Five years is...
Section 5.4.
I was gonna say, I believe they have an obligation to manage it for five years.
But do they have an obligation to own it for five years?
It says manage.
Okay, so there's, so Mr. Saunders could finish building this and then sell it to somebody, but continue to manage it for five years, and that would be legal under this agreement?
Theoretically, unless there's another provision elsewhere in the agreement.
Okay.
I believe the city needs to approve any assignment under the agreement, though, which is pretty standard. I'm trying to find the language.
Well, the question is, is would sale of the building constitute, sale of the project constitute an assignment under the agreement, or would assignment of the management process?
Well, it's just the developer.
I'd have to read most of the agreement again and go through the agreement to see if it appears elsewhere. If you'd like, while you're going on, I can do that.
Section 9.9. It says, "The developer agrees that it shall not sell, assign, or otherwise transfer any of its rights and obligations under this agreement in whole or in part without the prior express written consent of the city," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And I assume that lasts for five years. That's my assumption. Is that correct? Okay, so it would be Green Street Realty that would own the building for five years unless the city agrees to allow. Is that correct, Brandon?
Effectively, yeah.
Okay.
Although there is a provision to allow Green Street to assign to, because they'll probably create an LLC.
Yeah, Green Street Realty doesn't own anything, any actual physical assets, the management side, but we'd have an entity that I own that would be separate as the owner, but...
So how would that work in this agreement? That, I mean, I...
The entity, ultimately, the way it should work, now, I didn't draft this agreement, but ultimately, the way it should work is the entity that is going to own it should be the signatory to the agreement.
So it should not be Green Street Realty. It should not be Green Street Realty. It should be the LLC.
Well, we haven't set up the LLC yet because we don't have approval, so we've right now have it written as Green Street Realty. So if we do it as Chris's Apartments LLC or whatever we end up doing, we'll make sure that's in this final, this is a kind of a final worked-out agreement, other than we know that Green Street Realty will not be the actual owner of the property, because Green Street Realty's our management agent. It doesn't actually own any of the properties that I own and other entities.
This is very common with developers who develop multiple projects, not a one-off situation, where an LLC, some do it through a corporation, or corporations where the LLC owns the one project. And the quote developer, in this case, Green Street, sets up multiple LLCs or corporations, whatever their model happens to be, to own the separate projects. That also limits and helps for the developer shield their liability, so if there are problems with one project, it does not affect any other project.
So I'm not totally familiar with how LLCs are set up. Does that mean that we would know who the owners of the building are, if it's under an LLC, or is that...
It's no, in that respect, it's no different than a corporation. If Chris sets up ABC LLC and then CDEF LLC, finish the rest of the alphabet, that's, that's who owns the property. The LLC owns the property. LLC is like a corp...
Limited liability.
Yeah, it's a limited liability company, and it has owners. They're called members. And the members can be the managers, which are the officers, or there can be people who do not have an ownership interest, who can be the managers of the property. It's possible that Green Street could be the manager of the property, while use Chris's example, Chris's Apartments could be the owner. If you look up on the Secretary of State's website, it will identify who the manager is. It won't identify the owners.
Okay, so it won't identify the members of the LLC.
No more than private corporation. You don't know who the shareholders are unless it's a publicly traded corporation, which obviously these aren't.
Okay, so my last big, well, no, I have two big questions. The first one is, this agreement basically sells the land for a dollar, right? And does that title immediately go to the LLC or to Green Street Realty once it is signed, or do they have to complete the project?
No, they, it goes right away. They can't, it becomes difficult for them to get financing to build a project on land they don't own. It also becomes difficult to deal with utilities. It becomes difficult to deal with the contractors and the subcontractors who may have mechanic lien rights. If you get into a mechanic's lien situation and one person owns the property, the city owns the property, well, now we've got a problem, because theoretically, there are mechanic liens, not his. So no, you would, and the city, it would be in the city's best interest. Once the agreement is done, there would be a closing. Chris would dig into his pocket and find a buck or maybe some loose change, and the title would transfer, and away he goes. The LLC starts building the project.
In the agreement, I've also signed a guarantee, a personal guarantee, I believe, of a million dollars. The idea behind that was for me to go, you sell this to me for a dollar, and the next day I say, I'm not doing it. I'm going to sell it to my buddy down the street for $500,000 or a million dollars. Pocket the money, the development never happens. Well, we've, the city has thought through those things, and I have come up with some language that binds me to not being able to do that and doing the project, so seeing its completion. So we've got the guarantee in there, and that covers the city from...
The structure of this redevelopment agreement, or development agreement, is very similar to redevelopment and development agreements that we have reviewed where there is city property or city involvement through TIF funding. This, actually, Ken Beth's firm, I believe, drafted this agreement. I'm familiar with his, for the most part, template, and he has used this for years and years, and it works. It works very effectively. A best example is, for those who happen to remember, the hotel across the street. We advanced over a million dollars to that individual, and his project failed. And we obtained a judgment against him. He happened to own the property in his own name. We got a judgment against him, and as he was beginning to think about selling the property, he happened to walk in with a check made payable to the city for $1,090,000, based on the strength of the agreement.
My last question is for Brandon. So I think that you estimated break-even, is it 2020? Is that correct?
Twenty thirty, I believe.
Twenty twenty-three? And then the TIF goes on to 2040?
That's correct.
And so you estimate that it will add 1.98 million to the TIF by 2040? No, I'm confused by that number.
Yeah, I apologize. I used a couple different ways of talking about this. The, yeah, if, I'm gonna go back to my slides, because I, I set them up, because I realized the memo was a little confusing. I'll make that bigger for everybody. So that, that second bullet point there, it's going to generate about 3.4 million in new TIF revenues over the full life of the TIF, based on the estimate, and the spreadsheet's in the packet as well. In those first five years, we rebate the 450,000. That's the stair-step rebates. So that takes us down to about 3 million total over the life of the TIF. That's that third point down below. So if we, if we were to take the value of that property, as it's assessed or appraised today, actually back in 2015, 1 million, the TIF achieves that value by about 2030. So it's about, I think, 13 years to the break-even point. But it's not break-even based on a cash investment the city's making. It's based, break-even on the value we say it is. But it's important to actually think through the alternative scenario, because the city would actually have to attempt to sell this property to get that million dollars, and to get that same return of having 3 million in the bank. On that million dollars, we'd have to invest that money and lock it away for about 24 years and get about at least a 3% return. And at the end, we wouldn't necessarily have a project, let alone having the amount of control and say and public input on the outcome of that project as we've had for this process. So I hope that's...
Well, I'm still confused, but that's okay. I won't, I won't labor the thing. I do have one quick question. How much TIF funds did we use to purchase and demo the land that we're...
I honestly don't know the answer to that question. The acquisitions extend back quite some time into the past, and it's not entirely clear. It would take a fair amount of staff research to determine that. I have several feet of files of the acquisitions, demolitions, environmental reports, but a lot of effort did go into acquisition and demolition. That's, that's for sure. It is a sunk cost, though. The only value we have is the value of the property as it sits today, and that's what's most relevant for the city's determination of whether or not this makes fiscal sense moving forward.
All right. Well, congratulations. You made it through my 10 questions. Thank you very much.
Jared?
Chris, I had one question on design change with the breezeway off, off of Vine Street going away, and now there's a covered walkway through there. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Just thought it would be convenient to have a nice pass-through area that residents could easily get to the street. And we tried to avoid having those everywhere in the project and not make it a thoroughfare for, you know, people, maybe they're causing problems, and find it's a great place to escape and hide from whatever they're hiding from. But we liked that little breezeway. We did one similar to this on another project recently, and I think it just kind of creates, those, those units that are in the breezeway area are actually extra-large. They've got an extra room in them, so those are going to be kind of premium-type units. But we like that access, because our goal is to get people directed to downtown. We want to make it easy for them to get there and get back through, and having to walk all the way around the project or through small sidewalks. We thought this was a little more inviting, just added something other. I mean, obviously, we're missing, if we, if we didn't make that a breezeway, we could get another bedroom or two in there and get some more income, but we kind of gave that up with the idea that we thought it was kind of a nice feature, inviting something different than just a long stretch of building.
Because that was just open in the initial one.
Yeah, before we had the buildings, yeah, just a big gap between those. So we thought, let's use the, above that space for some, from some actual usable square footage for those, those residents that are in those, what'll be larger townhouses where those two breezeways are at. And we did have a comment today about, they look awfully dark. Well, it's, this right now is just a rendering, and we're under certain standards to have so much lighting handled with things we have to have for code in there. So it'll be a well-lit area. It's not very long. It's me to you, probably deep. They're not real, you know, deep units, but I thought it was a nice feature. Certainly could go away, but just something we kind of threw in there to change it up a little bit.
Sure. Bill, I'd like to make a motion.
I have a couple of questions.
You were gonna go.
Dennis, do you want to take the chair so I can ask a couple of questions?
Certainly. Okay, Bill, do you have a question, please?
Yeah, I have a couple for Chris and a couple for staff. So just to make sure, I think when I was looking at Libby's slides, it looked like there was one view, overhead view that showed the new design, but with one entry off of Urbana Street instead of the two entries, one off of Urbana and one, or one off of Elm and one off of Green. So this, this one that's on the screen now, that's the final design with the two entries?
That's where we have it right now. Yeah, we thought that just adding all these entries were, didn't really need to do that with this size of development. We thought this was, still kind of creates a little private area where the, where the development is, you know, got some, some feel of privacy to it, not a bunch of various places where not only residents could go in, but other people could get in there and drive around. I do like the little exclusive nature of it. I mean, you could ultimately even, you know, you could even gate it in a scenario like this if you ever wanted to, but we avoided that. It also allowed us to get a, another bedroom or two, which, which helps our economics since we've upped the kind of finishes to this on the exterior with the, with more bricks. So we liked, we liked that kind of being a solid run there in the back, kind of a U-shaped setup. I don't believe we have a breezeway going through that back for that exact very reason. We don't want to create it so it's a place you can hide.
So is that, is that the main reason that, why it was pushed out to Vine Street then? Because we have two driveways now instead of the one off of Urbana Street?
That's right. We're also going to have to deal, like I said, with the power poles and the existing kind of alleyway that's there now. There really isn't a way for us to reroute that, so we're, that's kind of where those line up, and it may not show it right now to exact scale, but we, in essence, are going to use that, that's there now, as the dividing line of the, kind of where the U takes place.
Okay. And then on the corner units on Vine Street, the ones with windows on both sides, I think in the plan, it was referred to as live-work or something?
Talked about that. I think those...
Office or something?
Yeah, one of the suggestions in the, the previous meetings was maybe you could have one where somebody could have a little, you know, boutique business of some kind. Maybe it's an office space. We have them set up right now. I believe those corner units that way, where somebody could live there, and maybe they, and whether that, whether we do that or not, we thought, and whether that changes code and a bunch of other stuff, I don't know yet, but we threw them in as a kind of a neat little option, we thought. Maybe it would be obviously small service type, type stuff, or maybe somebody's office space.
Tax preparer.
Those are kind of what, you know, we kind of threw a little bit of everything in here, but those could just be, end up being reg, just apartment units, or if we go that route, they might be a live-work type unit.
And even the ones in the middle of the block there that have garages, those have a little office in front, too, right?
I think those have more glass right now. I think we kind of, those could potentially be the same. I can't remember on that layout, if we say live-work on those as well.
Doesn't say live-work, but it looked like...
I think we had the corners kind of in mind, so it didn't become a retail strip center. We just wanted to, you know, whether that's something somebody is interested in or not, thought it was unique.
Yeah, I think that could be a selling point.
It was a good idea when somebody mentioned it in the last, last meeting.
And then on the accessibility, it's really hard, just because they're townhouses. I mean, ideally, even for an accessible unit, seems like you really want one floor. So a multi-family residential building with an elevator and get everything on, on one floor for each unit. So was the decision to build townhouses, I know that was one of the options in the RFP, but there were other options. Was the decision to do that mostly based on the tax...
Yeah, that was a good incentive, I think. Any, you know, I think the other groups that probably looked at this, probably the same idea. You're looking for any economic, you know, type advantage you can take. That program's been a good program, it sounds like, for the city. It's, I'm living out in Stone Creek. I certainly see a lot of construction going up because of it. We certainly took advantage of it. If this was a traditional apartment building with floor one, two, and three, those, those adaptable, in a three-story construction or two-story construction, elevators aren't required, so you'd have your handicap units along that first floor. But these are adaptable. Whether or not this is going to be an attractive design for, well, there's a lot of different disabilities, like John mentioned, but if you're in a wheelchair, it's still going to be an option for you. We feel like it's, there may be an option for, if they wanted that type of townhouse unit.
For some of the two-story units on the backside, it looks like the entryway is like in the kitchen from, from the outside of the square. Would it be possible to make that a walk-up and make a one-bedroom downstairs and a one-bedroom upstairs or something?
We talked about that. You get into a lot of, a lot of issues with fitting in your stairs and your layouts, and these are pretty tight unit layouts, and they're difficult to, to get all of the space you need required by code and to fit in stairs and beyond the initial stair to get into your, your main unit. That's a lot of times why you see that kitchen, kind of you come into a living room or kitchen area on that first floor. These will likely have living room, kitchen on the main floor, and then the bedrooms upstairs and the twos. On the threes, they'll have... On the threes, I'll have, I believe we show some kitchens on the second floor. You kind of go in the garage areas, and there's a bonus room there, and the bedrooms are upstairs.
Okay. And then on the, the TIF revenue projection, there's a little figure about hard costs there. It says total construction cost, seven million, hard cost, four point two. Does that total construction cost include land? Probably not.
Yeah, we're, construction cost does not include land. We're thinking this is somewhere between five and seven million dollars. We think it's going to land six to six and a half million for the construction cost. In most of our developments, land is typically ten percent of our cost on a lot of our developments. So this is obviously a nice, nice...
If you included land, it might be seven to eight million, and we're talking about four points.
Yeah, with, yeah, with land. If you put a value of a million on the land, the project may, you know, be a seven and a half million-type total project all in.
So that means there's over about three million in soft costs? Is that kind of high?
That's just, we don't even have real numbers. We're just throwing stuff in right now. Without a full set of plans, it's very difficult to, you know, we can come up with, hey, it's going to be a hundred dollars a foot or a hundred and twenty, you know, a hundred and ten dollars a foot. But again, until we get kind of that final version of plans and get everything bid out, we're just, we're guessing a little bit on, on cost. We did a project similar to this across the Champagne Library, although they are not townhouse-style, they are three-story, and those came in around, you know, a little over a hundred thousand a unit. We had some, they're a lot smaller than these. Those one-bedrooms are five hundred and fifty square feet, you know, and the two-bedrooms are eight hundred and fifty square feet. These are significantly bigger. We are typically pricing this type of product for rent at a dollar twenty to a dollar thirty per square foot. Since these units are so large, twelve hundred and fifty square feet to seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, we're going to be more than that dollar to dollar ten types per square footage. So you can kind of take our square footages and put a dollar to dollar ten on those. The larger units will be more towards the dollar a foot just because the market doesn't bear a lot more rent just because the unit's larger. So we're definitely going to be at the mid-tier for new construction on the two-bedrooms. The threes are kind of an unknown entity off of campus. You know, on campus, we might get twenty-five hundred for a three-bedroom, like on an eight oh nine Nevada. These are going to be sixteen, fifteen to seventeen hundred dollars, which is a pretty good, I think, a pretty good price point is what we're shooting for. We've got to price them competitively or they won't lease.
Yeah, I think we all appreciate that there's risk involved because there just hasn't been any building in this area in quite a while, so we understand that there's going to be a premium for us to get that risk.
Yeah, we're, it's a little unknown as far as the development area, but I'm really excited about it. I wouldn't do it. I certainly don't need to be doing it. My staff doesn't want me to add any more projects to our plate, but we feel really good about it. We think it's just such a unique, we don't have a pro, you know, anything in downtown Urbana. We get a lot of requests. We've got a few scattered site buildings, but I think it's going to be very successful, and I think it's just going to boost what's going on down here. You know, I believe there's a lot of momentum, and I'm excited about it. I'm excited about building the tax base as well on this and several other projects. We sent in another project today for something we're looking to do along University Avenue that has no incentives to it. So just excited overall and still very, very bullish on the market.
My last question, I'm not sure if it's for staff or for Mr. Saunders, but I think it's section five five talks about the owners or manage, owners and successive owners through 2042, the end of the agreement. Can't apply for any property tax exemption, and I know we've done that before, especially with hospital developments and stuff, or, you know, private developments of hospitals like the Hampton Inn, I think that was in there. And I think it's boilerplate language for TIF developments. Does that also prevent application for homestead exemptions?
I don't believe, we asked that question today. I'm not a hundred percent sure these are going to apply for the homestead exemption just based on the fact that they're, it's more of an apartment setup unless we individually pin these, which we talked about possibly dealing with the idea of being able to resell them individually. Of course, we would take advantage of the homestead exemption if it's offered. We've done that before, I think, and people are always confused on what that means, and that really only means that you pay what everybody else pays in taxes, not any less than what everybody else pays. It's, it costs more. The, the commercial-type properties are taxed at a little higher rate, and it requires, of course, the tenant to sign off on all the forms. So we do that in a lot of our single-family condo-type developments. This could qualify for it. It would not be something that would be needed in that first five-year period, and I think that language is pretty boilerplate in there, that five point five. That's just saying, we got to keep it for the five years, and that time, that, that one incentive that's offered will be exhausted. And then if there is other incentives that are offered to anybody in the area, I think it's saying those, whether it's me or a successive owner, could have that opportunity to apply for them and not be penalized because they received, you know, the Think Urbana. I can't imagine what it would be. My guess is most of your incentives would be for new development, likely not some existing project, but I think it's pretty boilerplate. We didn't look at that and say, great, we got the twenty-year or whatever it was. It's, we get the, the idea behind the contract is to make us follow our obligations, and, you know, we're getting some benefit out of it, obviously, on the land and the tax benefit, but to like turn the project and try to resell it before we complete it or something is not our plan, you know, plan on keeping, keeping the project for...
So I guess my main concerns is the ADA accessibility. I don't know if there's any way to, to look again at those two-story units and see if maybe we could do a walk-up. The other is, is the setback and what kind of drove that. And some of it's kind of our policies and things that we need to take a look at. The other part that bothers me a little bit with the building right there facing west is imagining walking by there on a hot summer afternoon with the sun blasting off the building onto the sidewalk, and I don't know how much heat that brick's going to absorb or emit from absorbing the sun, but at least, I guess, the sawtooth shape might dampen that a little bit.
I'm excited there'll be something to have sun come off of instead of... But yeah, no, I don't, I don't think, you know, I think we're, like I talked about, one of our big issues, challenges in this project are going to be the given fact that we've now determined there's not a lot we can do about the power line that runs down the existing alley. We're going to get an easement from the city for that alley, but that's where that stuff's going to sit and likely, right, where those entries are going to come. So the further we keep pushing off Vine, I'm concerned we're going to shrink this project and maybe lose a, a set of units because we don't have a lot of physical space there. And again, I, I think, you know, this B four zoning doesn't have any setback requirements, so I think it's going to look really good up closer to the street on that front side, give more of that commercial feel like you've got when you're walking downtown or, you know, some of the feedback on a project, we look on University Avenue last year, we had it set off the street, and a lot of the feedback was, oh, put it up on the sidewalk and, you know, I guess we, we're not sure, but I, I do, I don't think this is going to look unusual or way out of place. I think it's going to look really nice, actually, and, but we're going to be careful not to, if we got room to set it back some, we're certainly going to do that. We don't have a desire to be right on the sidewalk for any other reason other than just space, needed space.
It looked to me like the original plan was about a hundred, hundred-two bedrooms, and this one might be ninety-two, ninety-four, something like that.
We lost a few beds, yeah, in this, and again, this could be, we've got kind of those minimums in that plan, and again, once we lay it out with our civil engineer and actually lay it out on the real site, right now, this is just dropping schematics in. So it's going to change slightly, but it's going to generally be somewhere in this, this range of units. So again, we can't shrink them this way a whole lot more and get everything in by code that's needed.
Okay, thanks a lot. I think they're very attractive-looking functioning units. I, you know, I'd rent one if I didn't already have a house.
Yeah, I know, it'd be, that's, that's ideal. We think the same thing.
So I'll return the chairmanship back to Bill if he'll acknowledge, one more question.
Actually, I think there might be two more. Eric was first.
All right. Well, it's just a comment, I guess people have different reactions, but, and maybe this is colored by the fact that I grew up in New York City, right in Manhattan, and I think it's okay for something that's in an urban location to look urban. So this is, this is, this is okay. It looks like, like it seriously, like it makes us look like a serious city.
I think it's just going to change this whole landscape as you go down the, I mean, I think it's going to be for the, for the positive. I think it's going to, I mean, people are going to notice it because it's been so long as a single-story building with a big grass lot. So I do think people that haven't been paying attention to the project and live in Urbana or Champagne and get by it are going to be impressed, and it's not going to be a hulking, you know, it's going to look, I think it's going to look like it fits in pretty well.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just thought of one other thing that maybe I have a little bit of concern about, but maybe not. In all the plans that you show, both in this two-story and the three-story apartment buildings, there's multiple bathrooms. And so on the two-story with no balcony, there's a, a small bath on the first floor. On the second, there's two baths, and same with the third. So it kind of makes me think that you're really thinking about student housing, not professional housing or family housing, because, and I, maybe you can like just address this because, you know, many families can share a bathroom. They won't need the second bathroom on the second floor or the third floor. So are you going to be offering flexibility whether there's a third bath, or these are all going to be, I mean, what's your really, is your goal to have, to rent this to people who are not related but are sharing space? Or to families who are related?
I think both. I think you could have, you know, friends that work downtown and the bars or restaurants that might want to live together, but the trend in, in the business is bed-to-bath parity as much as you can get. So when you have a two-bed, one bath, or a three-bed, one bath, I think we'd be doing a disservice to even families because I have got four kids myself, and we don't like sharing bathrooms. You know, I, I think that's the trend in off-campus development and campus. If we can put two-bedroom and two-bath in, everybody likes having that second bath, and that's really the driving force. We don't see this as a room-by-room rental where we're like, okay, you rent a room and you rent a room, like we might on, on campus at Capstone Quarters, which we've managed for ten years. We do a lot of, we have a lot of four-bed, four-baths, and the reality is we rent those in individual leases. They may not know each other. We look at this as being a joint lease, whether it's, you know, Brandon and I signing a lease or a family, and I think just, that's just an extra many, that's an extra cost. It'd be a lot cheaper to build them without, you know, ninety-nine bedrooms and ninety-nine bathrooms, but we like the extra, that thing just is a huge selling point. I think we have to have something here to hook you and make you choose this over something else. And my take on the market is when people go, aren't you worried about saturation and all the stuff being built? Of course I am, but I'm also not saying that I need more residents to fill these apartments. We're planning on taking people and filling in from other stuff. So somewhere else, there's going to be some holes until either our population grows or more jobs are created or the university enrollment grows. So it's a competitive, competitive world, and we, that's the main reason we put the extra baths in.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Marlin?
I will weigh in on bathrooms. But one thing about your design that's different from others is that you have a master bedroom and a master bath, and that's going to set these units apart as well. So I think it'll appeal to wider demographics, so...
And if we decide to sell these as, you know, we have the ability to make them zero lot lines or condos in the documents, and, you know, they may be something down the line that, you know, that people want to buy and own, and that's certainly a possibility. We want to tread that very carefully at the front side because you could get in a situation where you put them out as condos and sell three of them, and then people have financing issues and, but I think, I want to keep that option open, and they're set up that way as individual units with a lot of them with garages, that somebody may choose to say, I'd like to just own mine. It's in a great location and think of them as condos as well. So that's, we certainly are trying to think of all those types of things. I think the challenge with doing it right now in this market on the front end is we may get ourselves in contracts and only have a few that take advantage of it, and we want to run them and operate them a while, and have that option down the road.
Any question, more questions?
Again, yes. Again, I'm not familiar, but I do have a question about, are, are there any units that are going to be set aside for a more affordable price for people who actually would like to own property or be able to rent well, you know, but it not costs so much?
Sure. Yeah, it's a good, good question. These currently are not, don't have an affordability clause to them necessarily where a certain amount has to be at a certain rent level. We've got other projects in the market that are like that where they've got to be at a certain sixty percent of the salaries or the income of the area. It's not like that, but I will tell you on these, new construction is, is not cheap, and these are going to be at the lower tier, in my opinion, of, of the projects being built on the price scale. So somebody that is looking around and looking at multiple options of choosing something brand, brand-new, I, I believe these are going to be affordable in that sense, but affordability is a whole nother discussion, what, what is affordable for certain people or not, and we think they're going to be affordable for new, new standards, new construction.
I'm just thinking about maybe, you know, what, what a person's average salary nowadays seems to be because salaries are still very stagnant.
Yeah.
And I don't know, you know, I, I was just wondering if, if, if that was at all in the ballpark where you guys were thinking about making something more affordable in, in the area? I mean, there's a school down, there's schools in the area and everything, and I'm sure there'd probably be young families that would want to move in the area.
Yeah. I think Brandon's got a reply, too, on maybe another project.
Okay, Brandon.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, that the, the city, going back to the original issue, and so the request for proposals, requested that this be a, a market-rate project. And so we, you know, we, we talked to sort of developers who wanted to deliver that kind of, of a project. However, we had separate conversations with developers about affordable housing developments, and so the next item on the agenda actually relates to one of those projects that Brinshaw Development is proposing for, I'm going to, approximately forty affordable units in an apartment building with, I think, nine tiny homes and six artist-live-work spaces and a community arts center. The next agenda item isn't directly about the project, it's about the land that it's being proposed for. However, the city's response has been to try to seek a variety of housing to meet the needs of our downtown, so this project meets one set of needs for young professionals, empty nesters, graduate students, and a, the affordable project will meet needs for a different group of potential residents for our downtown, and then the student housing projects, such as the rail project that's been announced and the other projects Chris has been working on, meet, meet needs for students as well. So we don't generally try to meet all those needs in one project.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion, Jared.
I'm going to move ordinance number 2019-01-005, an ordinance approving redevelopment agreement with Green Street Realty Company of Illinois and authorizing the sale of certain real estate, specifically the 200 block of South Vine Street and the 300 block of East Green Street afforded to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
I'd like to second that.
Been moved by Jared and accepted by Dennis. Is there any discussion now, or are we, have we already discussed that?
Please, no. Let's move on.
No discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is ordinance number 2019-01-006, an ordinance approving and authorizing a second amendment to the new Lincoln Square parking agreement. Brendan?
Hello again. So as the ordinance title notes, this is a second amendment. The original agreement for parking with Lincoln Square was entered into by the city back in 2005, and it was first amended in 2011. And what this agreement does is it was predicated on two things. One, a discussion with the mall owner about the Health Alliance leaving the mall and a request for more flexibility in that agreement and some cost relief because of the mall not using as much parking as it once had, because the current agreement requires the mall owner to lease a hundred spaces whether they're being issued permits or not. The other conversation was with Brinshaw Development about the proposed Urbana Arts project that's, that's been announced, and again, that's an affordable housing. Um, that's, that's been announced, and again, that's an affordable housing development. In order for them to proceed with their application to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for those low-income housing tax credits, which I think will occur in February, they need to, um, have a letter from the city about, um, our ability and interest in, uh, making that property available for sale, um, as, to allow that project to proceed. So this agreement accomplishes both of those things. Specifically, it eliminates Lot 24 and 24 West, which are the lots south of Illinois, um, near the mall, from the, uh, parking agreement. It gives the mall the ability to lease a specific number of permitted spaces from zero to a hundred in the adjacent parking area. Currently, the adjacent parking area is just a one-block radius around the mall, so that really just leaves these lots, well, the lot that we're proposing, um, the 200 Vine project is a part of, and the parking deck is options. So this amendment does one additional thing, and it expands the definition of that adjacent parking area to include lots that are within a third of a mile, um, walking distance of any entrance to the mall, and that includes the now-vacant Civic Center parking lot where there's, uh, ninety-eight parking spaces. So in the event that the mall owner needs to, um, utilize those spaces, uh, they could be made available, and, um, the mall would be charged, um, per space at that time. This agreement is designed to take effect retroactively on December first, 2018. And, yeah, overall, it, it sets the stage for, uh, a new potential future redevelopment for our downtown, bringing, meeting a need that hasn't been addressed, and that is for affordable housing in the core downtown near many services and, and businesses, and it, uh, also assists the mall owner in, um, being flexible as the mall continues to transition. Take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Brandon, Mary Alice?
Two quick questions. Uh, my first question is, um, if they do choose to rent extra spaces, say thirty, is that term that lease a year? Do they commit to a year, or is it month by month?
I'm, I think it's, it's a monthly, it is a monthly fee in, in the amendment, and they have to give...
Thirty days notice?
Yeah, they have to give thirty days' notice, so, um, I don't think there's a, a limit on the term of, of when they're leasing. However, some of this does occur administratively in that, um, it takes time to issue permits and potentially move spaces around, and, and our, uh, parking folks at the city, uh, handle that in close coordination with the mall owner.
Um, and who's allowed to select the location of the spaces? Uh, you mentioned the Civic Center? So the city would say, I mean, the owner would say, I need fifty spaces for the next six months, and the city would say, you can have these, is that correct?
Yeah, the city retains the right to determine.
Thank you.
Other questions? No, I was going to make a motion, quick question.
Just a quick comment, I wanted to thank mall owner Jim Webster and, um, Brandon Boys and Carol Mitten for, um, getting this negotiation done. It was, it was, um, you know, it was a little complex to do it, but I think it, it, it's to both our advantages for the mall owner, its flexibility and reduced cost, and for the city, its flexibility in being able to develop this site, and, um, it will allow the Brinshaw project to move forward, so I really appreciate the work that went into this.
Okay, fair motion.
Yeah, I'll make it. Yeah, I think this is a great project, I really support it, it's, um, I really like the idea that it's expanding the width or the depth of our downtown, which I think has been waiting on the horizon for such a long time, and now we're actually achieving it, and it's going to bring value to yet more properties in the community, so. So I'd like to forward ordinance, or I'd like to move to forward, um, to the city council with approval, ordinance number 2019 dash oh-one dash zero-zero-six, an ordinance approving and authorizing a second amendment to the Lincoln Square, new Lincoln Square parking agreement.
I will second that gladly, with much enthusiasm.
Okay, Dean, uh, motion by Dennis and seconded by Dean, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution number 2019 dash zero-one dash zero-zero-one-R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, National Integrated Ballistic Information Network equipment. Chief Seraphin?
All right, hello, welcome. So in 2013, there was a striking uptick in gun violence in our community, and we've wrestled with this in many different ways, things like the Champagne County Community Coalition. Has really stepped up to the plate, offer different programs, uh, such as Fresh Start, we've, um, and then other, uh, all sorts of different, um, things with Park District and, and work programs. We've addressed certain things through our multi-agency enforcement team of our Street Times Task Force, which focuses a lot on gun violence, and, um, well, we've had another opportunity for another piece of equipment, and as you may have seen in your packet material, um, the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, helped us, and specifically the city of Champaign, as far as being the lead agency, with obtaining, um, a NIBIN system, which is that, um, very nice long thing, the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, and essentially what it does is uses digital imagery as a database for casings, on spent firearm casings, um, in addition to the actual spent projectiles themselves, although I do believe that the casings are its, its forte based on our experience. NIBIN was established in 1999, um, they, it's operated under the ATF, and, um, claims about seventy-four thousand hits have been obtained, so essentially when a firearm, um, firing pin strikes the back of the cartridge and the cartridge is expelled, it leaves a unique identifying mark, and this is not exactly like fingerprinting, but that's sort of the idea, there's a tool mark that is unique, and then we can then match casings left maybe from shooting A in Urbana to shooting B in Champaign. Currently, the nearest NIBIN machine that, that we have access to is located in Peoria, and having one here locally in this, in the Champaign Police Department is a absolute, uh, incredible uptick in our efficiency, um, especially for our, um, evidence technician. Uh, there are four agencies who are looking to go in with regards to helping with the support, the warranty, the extended warranty and maintenance, so the initial outlay of just over $200,000 is part of the funding, of the grant, the grant funding, the remaining funds, uh, and that includes one year of, uh, warranty and upkeep, the remaining three years are divvied up then amongst four different agencies, uh, and, uh, Urbana's chunk is around fourteen thousand over those three years. And so the, uh, the intergovernmental agreement is, we're asking for is so that we can, uh, continue to support this project, um, as we move forward, and hopefully, um, um, speed up our response to, to these types of investigations, and it's a, I think, a, a very, a very good tool, and one we just don't use very often because of the, the space and, uh, and time involved in getting to Peoria. So I'll take any questions.
Will this basically be, um, the center that's going to be created in your offices be, uh, like basically a computer desk? Uh, is it a computer-based, or do you have to have hardware also?
It's, it's a combination of both, and I'm not an expert with exactly what the machinery is, but yes, it will be, and it will be, again, this will be housed actually in Champaign, so our technician will still have to remove this box of casings and that bag of casings and package them up, but then just drive across, across town, so. But yes, it is actual machinery.
So you had, you, so do you need to scan the casings and then enter that into your ballistic?
Correct.
Data ware?
Yes.
Okay, I got you, thank you.
I just wanted to note, so the, the, when you scan the casings, there's a search for same kind of firing pin type of who's it's on the casing?
The who's it, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a tool, it's like a tool mark, um, that, that's the, the section of the lab, I guess, where they, you know, um, so yes, there's a certain amount, and I'm not an expert in exactly how that works and how the firing pins and the orientations and the calibers and all of those things would go together, but yes, it would be a photograph, um, and then it's expanded up to some ridiculously high level of magnification.
Okay, so my other question is that, is would this require another person to transport these kinds of things to keep the chain of evidence together, or?
No, we believe we can do this with our current evidence technician staff.
Okay.
This is coming from forfeiture funds, which if I remember correctly can only be spent for law enforcement equipment, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that in mind, I would hope that we can make a motion to send this to, uh, city council with full recommendation for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, for resolution number 2019 oh-one dash zero-zero-one-R, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement, National Integrated Ballistic Information Network Equipment, Police Department.
I'll second it as read.
It's moved by Dean and seconded by Jared. I, I did have one more question, um, is this, do you know if the, the hits that are obtained from this, are they admissible evidence in court, or is it more for investigation and exploring?
Um, probably both, so what would ultimately happen is it's sort of like a fingerprint, we might get an initial hit, um, and then someone would take the fingerprint, they would take the casing, and an actual tool mark person at the lab would then go, yes, indeed, those, that is the same tool mark, just like they said, that is the same fingerprint. Um, so it's initially, um, an investigative tool, and then it becomes a, um, when they make the confirmation, then it would become court-worthy.
And is there, is there a false positive rate or something, anything on those?
There has been some discussion about that, and I think that speaks a little bit to the, the, the fact that there are fewer, uh, there aren't as many, uh, casings as there are fingerprints in the database, but I don't think that's an, an issue for us to worry about now, simply because of, again, that one-to-one mark is, that one-to-one match would be, would follow up.
Okay, thanks. Um, any discussion, Eric?
Uh, I guess it's just a question, so I quickly Googled NIBIN, and one of the things that I'm seeing very quickly is that there's a wide range of effectiveness with which the tool is used from one, uh, jurisdiction to another, so I'm sure that we're going to get trained and we'll be up to speed. Do you think that the use of this tool will be part of what's going on at a police training institute?
It might be mentioned, I don't know that they would necessarily train them. We will probably have two or three people that would be trained up enough and, and, and have the expertise to go over and actually sign onto the machine and make the requisite scans and entries. Um, I, I think some of what you've read there on NIBIN, as, as I did, um, that it's a function, as you can see, we don't have a very high success rate of entry because we don't have, it's, it's quite cumbersome for us to do that. So I think as they spread more and they get, they're become, um, used, I believe that Springfield or Sangamon County is going through a similar process as Champaign County is. Uh, I think I was just up visiting my folks in the Chicago Land area, reading a newspaper in Aurora, Illinois. PD is also getting an NIBIN machine, so as it, I think it spreads, um, it will become a much, um, more widely-used tool.
So, so it'll be something that maybe some part of, of our force would be trained in, like we have some crisis intervention team people?
Correct.
So now we'll have some, some NIBIN people who...
Yes, this is, and this is clearly probably going to be functioned more, uh, as far as like the evidence technician, the backup person who works in Investigations Division, they'll be the ones that'll have the training, but a, and I would expect a patrol officer or detective on the scene just collect the casings, and then we'll, we'll get them to the right people for entry within the next few days.
Any, any other discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Uh, our last ordinance up tonight is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Section 343, increase the number of Class BB liquor licenses for Analog Urbana, LLC DBA Analog Urbana, 129 North Race Street, Urbana.
Yes, this is a new business located, um, well, just north of the parking lot by the Courier Cafe on Ri- Wright Street. So they are looking for the BB license, which will increase from five to six. There's a couple of other changes on your chart there that I just wanted to, uh, call your attention to. We had a Class A license number go from thirteen to twelve, that was related to the construction, um, at the Tin Roof Tavern in Urbana. They were under construction last year, they didn't renew their liquor license before, um, the December 31st timeline, and then on the back page, they also held a video gaming license, they also did not renew that. They, however, do intend to, um, but because they didn't renew by the deadline, they have to reapply for a whole new license, and they're going to be doing that now that construction is finished, so this, this decrease is, is temporary in those licenses. Then the R1 decrease from nine to eight is for Rainbow Garden, the business was sold, it's got a new owner, and they are no longer selling liquor, so that's the explanation behind those changes.
Bill?
What, do you have to excuse yourself again?
No, so I thought it would be fun for me to make the movement to pass this ordinance for the first time since I've been on council.
It's a motion, not a movement, that's something different.
That would be back there.
Okay, Jared?
All right, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we move ordinance number 2019 dash zero-one dash zero-seven, which was just read, so I'm not going to repeat it, forward to the full council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jared and seconded by Dean. Uh, Sharice, you don't have any conflicts on liquor licenses, do you? Do you own a bar or anything like that?
Say that again?
Do you, do you work for anybody that sells liquor or own a bar or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Just chucking.
I consume enough.
Yeah, um, the, I didn't look up the building address, it's, uh, just north of the Courier, so is that the, um, Old Butician Building that's finally coming into life again? I love that, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So you... Thank you all very much, I think I had my microphone off.